Okay, everybody, we're ready to start. Thank you. Okay, first of all, under the authority of the county board rules, I appoint member LaPlante to serve as temporary member of the Transportation and Public Works Committee in order to establish a quorum. I also appoint Chair Conroy to be a member of both Transportation and Public Works because her presence is necessary to establish a quorum. Next, a physical quorum of the members is physically present. I will entertain a motion to permit those members not physically present due to personal illness or disability, employment purposes for the business of the board, family, or other emergency to participate via video teleconference. That would be members Sam Tarrantore, Carrie Galaski, and Jim Zay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries. Next, I would like a roll call, please. Oh, yes, okay. I call the joint special meeting of the Transportation Committee and Public Works Committee to order. Member Deacon Garcia chairs the Public Works Committee, and I chair the Transportation Committee, therefore, we will both chair this special call meeting today. May I have a roll call? Here?
Here.
Turn your microphone on.
We can't hear you. Did you say me?
Yes.
Here.
Members A.
Here.
Members A.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Cahill.
Member Galassi.
Here.
For the record, member Desartes here as well.
Member Desartes.
Here.
And member LaPlante. And Chair Conroy.
Here.
She called member Chaplin. Okay, great, okay. All right. The purpose of today's joint special meeting is for the Division of Transportation to provide an update on their plans to address the condition of the Highway Maintenance Garage, 140 Building, and discuss potential opportunities to partner with the Division of Transportation on repurposing their buildings. No final decision is being asked of committee members today. The DOT and Facilities Management are seeking support to continue to explore a suite of building alternatives and financing options. Expect that final recommendations will be presented first quarter 2024. I now turn it over to Nick Kotmeyer.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us on Monday. I know it's not a typical day, but we felt that due to the size and scope and importance of this building, we wanted to have a special call dedicated just to this building. We've done a lot of work, staff and transportation and facilities management have been working on this for several months, probably over a year in a case of transportation, to come up with some options. As Chair said, we are not looking for a final recommendation today, or even concurrence. We have had some very good meetings over the past couple of weeks that have given us different items to think about, and we'll bring those up today. And we need a good month or two, if not a little bit more, to vet those out and incorporate, and we will come back with a final design, final recommendation. But at least, due to the size and scope, we wanted you to hear what our train of thought was on this and where we're going as a staff. The first part of this will be Chris Schneider with a discussion on the 140 Building, condition of it, and then some options with where to move it. And then the second part of the presentation will be from Tim Harbaugh about potential reuse of the old 140 Building. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris.
Still on? Not as tall. So, okay, thank you, Nick, and thank you all for being present today. So you do have in front of you the same PowerPoint that will be showing on the screen. And again, we're here to talk about our 140 Building and then options to replace it. So next slide, next slide, ready to ahead, see how fast this is going? So, so let's just orientate you to the DOT facilities on the west side of the campus or the opposite side of the street. So you can see from the exhibit up there or at your space, the area outlined in bold are the DOT facilities, or that's where we operate maintenance out of. So we occupy about eight and a half acres. We have two primary buildings, the 140 Highway Garage. That's about 58,000, call it 60,000 square feet. That's mostly where we do a lot of our storage of vehicles, but also our operating staff and sign shop operate out of there. That's the building we're here to talk about today. The fleet building, which is directly behind it or to the, how you're facing, I guess it means to the left, face the same way, that would be where we maintain our fleet. But besides the buildings, we have the other facilities across the street. We have two salt domes. We have a fueling station that's under contract to be designed to replace that fuel station, separate contract, separate from this. In terms of surface areas, we have a lot of parking for employees, but we also have to rely on those parking surfaces for equipment storage and vehicle storage because our current building, Highway Garage, is insufficient to accommodate those vehicles under roof. Next slide. So turning our attention to the 140 Building. So it was originally built in 1957, so that's a 67-year-old building, the original building, the largest portion. It's been added on to twice in that time as the system, as our highway maintenance operations grew and our network grew, so did our equipment to maintain that. Again, 65 years old, essentially, the building has outlived its useful life. The HVAC systems are extremely antiquated, the building envelope, the roof, the windows all need to be replaced. And so it really doesn't have, there's no option to not do anything at this point. There has to be something done to the garage to accommodate the needs of the DOT going forward. So next slide. So before we identify what we were going to do, we kind of identified or developed what we call our guiding principles. There was, if we're going to look at a new building or rehabilitated building, what do we want to get out of it? So the first one is maximize under roof storage. We have a lot of equipment that's stored outside. That's not good, being exposed to the elements. The site circulation is extremely difficult and tight on the site, especially during snow and ice operations. We talked about the mechanical, electrical. ADA, we have compliance with a lot of elements, but just doors and hardware and ways to open them have not been upgraded. A key is whatever we do, we have to maintain 24/7 operations, especially during snow and ice. We'll be able to look at green initiatives, for example, solar, and there would be a desire to recollect DOT engineering and permitting staff with the operation staff, which is how it used to be several years. Next slide. So let's just take the existing 140 Building and say, okay, let's just rehabilitate it. Let's take care of the HVAC and other elements and do that. So estimated cost about $15 million. It doesn't increase the footprint. When you go back to our guiding principles, it hits four of the seven, and you can read them. The concerns is we still have a 65-year-old building sitting out there, or at least a good chunk of it is 65 years old, really retains existing operations and storage, so it's no value added by spending $15 million. And again, we don't, it's not large up to meet our current needs. So that's the rehabilitation strategy. Next slide. So then we looked at rehabilitating it, let's just remove and replace it at the same location, enlarge it. So you can see the estimated cost climbs considerably, 45 to 50 million. We do get another 50,000 square feet. It would have to be staged constructed in a way that would allow us to maintain snow and ice operations and operations throughout the year. So again, we hit four of the seven guiding principles, the one that's added is we're able to co-locate the engineering staff and permitting staff on this side of the street and with our maintenance team across the street. Concerns, while the under roof storage has increased, it still falls short of what we need, so we'll still have to do some exterior outside storage. The biggest concern with this option is since we're removing and replacing it at the same footprint is maintaining 24/7 snow and ice operations. That means that we would start construction in April and have to have a shell up and walls up and space for staff to report to within seven months. We don't really think that's realistic, given the size of the building we're talking about. Then we also talked about the circulation by making our building bigger, that constrains further the circulation patterns on site. So, next option, we remove, replace it. Still on the west campus, but we actually move it into the north area of our holdings to allow us to maintain operations in the existing building while the new building is being built. So price tag goes up, again, we keep making it a little bit bigger. So in this case, we've added about 75,000 square feet. It would require, if you go back, which I don't, I'm not, you can go back to the original one, the first slides, we do have all of our snow and ice operations in that corner. So they would first have to all move to the opposite end of our holdings, which is right along Manchester. Those of you familiar with that area, it would be right adjacent to the residential area. So again, we're doing more with our guiding principles. We do, we have five of the seven. We are able to build this in a way that allows us to operate out of it throughout the entire construction duration while the new building is being built. We talked about some concerns of moving all snow and ice closer to residential. You can see this, the constrained circulation, you can see where staff parking is going to be and how we've got vehicles coming in, coming out every day, especially snow and ice, and they're having to circulate around those employee parking areas and pedestrian ways. It is in close proximity to a floodplain, it's actually right next to it, and there's really no ability to expand our operations in the future, specifically if for someday our fleet facility, which is 20 years old, ever has to get replaced, there's really no ability to put it anywhere else on the site. So we looked at the existing west campus, and now we took a step back, and we said, okay, if the west campus is constrained, what about building a new facility at a new location? So next slide. And these next slides are going to be basically drawings of open space and a shape around it. So this is just north of here, County Farm and St. Charles Road, right where the Great Western Trail crosses, so that's at the southern end of this. So there's a currently zoned industrial area immediately north of here. We would be, we believe we'll be able to accommodate our expansion from about 60,000 square feet to 150,000 square feet. It would allow for the relocation of fleet maintenance someday in the future, and it provides us about 10 acres. So we're going from eight and a half to about 10 acres, a little bit better spaced. All of our guiding principles are accommodated, so that's a good thing. Some of the concerns is the cost escalation. So now we're going to have to purchase property, bring utilities, construct stormwater detention, and construct a larger area for employee parking. It does decentralize our garage operations and our fleet maintenance. Right now, they're right across, basically, an aisle, now they'd be about two miles apart. Next slide. So we kind of looked a little closer to home, so to speak, here at the county, and that would be the Fairgrounds property, immediately adjacent to the campus. Again, similar to the site we just talked about, it does provide the space we need, about 10 acres. The cost goes down considerably, and that's because you don't have the property acquisition cost, parking, detention, et cetera. So we looked at this location on the, what's called the north area of the campus, that provides the footprint we need. We would be able to use the existing parking deck for employee parking, and again, all of our seven guiding principles are met. One of the concerns raised with this location, or any location on the fairgrounds, was access. I'm concerned, obviously, Manchester Road is residential character, so we would be looking to essentially extend the North Ring Road, so the road we just rebuilt a year or so ago, we would extend it further east to connect to this area. We'd also have to do some work as you approach the signal to accommodate some of our larger vehicles and salt deliveries, but employees and equipment, our own fleet operators, as well as deliveries, would come along the back road, adjacent to basically the railroad. So we did meet with the fairgrounds, Jim McGuire, and we had a conversation. He did express that this location is a concern. It is where they host Ripfest, the Highland Games, and a number of other fair-related or community-related events. So during that meeting, next slide, please, please. He offered that maybe we should look at or explore what we're calling alternate Site B, which is essentially the existing grass parking area, obviously, in a rainstorm and in snow, that's not really useful. So his thought was, if you're looking for space, this might be an attractive opportunity. So again, these are just concepts, they really haven't been vetted out much, certainly not this one, as well as the other off-site location on County Farm and St. Charles. So as you look at these, next slide. So clearly, the preferred alternate is to relocate. Anything we do on the west side, we're not going to accommodate what our ultimate needs are. So the preferred option is to relocate. We talked about the off-site, off-site location, which is County Farm north of here, and the two fairgrounds, you can kind of see somewhat the side-by-side comparison. Clearly, the costs jump out as a big determining factor. In the one consideration, the off-site, the land, utilities, the stormwater, all need to be provided, whereas here, staying near the campus or the fairgrounds, the land is owned, utilities exist, stormwater detention was just expanded by facilities last year or this year. So with that, more to do. Okay, again, we're here to just throw out concepts of where we're going and letting people know the order of magnitude we're talking about for the largest highway project we'll ever have is a building. And with that, one of the things we want to talk about is financing for this package.
So I'll kind of take over a little bit on the financing. As any DOT project, it's 100% the responsibility of DOT to fund it. They have done a very good job of planning for this project over the last couple of years, and you can see, let's take off-site alternate number two at the fairgrounds, either sites A or B. We're looking at a total price tag of 60 to 65 million. They have, by the time this project starts, and we're probably two years away from breaking ground, they'll have close to 40 million to 45 million in the bank for this, and so they are going to have a shortfall of approximately 20 to 25 million. And once again, this is just for discussion, we are not deciding right now. The thought process would be, they have a couple of options. How do you fund that additional shortfall? Do you go get a bank loan and do that? Do you do a bond issue? Or do you borrow from the reserves, which we have precedent for, and then they pay us back? So those are options. Clearly, the bank loan and the bond issue would have expenses associated with it, interest, issuance expenses. And so at this point, we would probably say, let's consider a loan from the general fund. The good thing is, we will spend 100% of the DOT money first, so this issue, they would not borrow the money probably for a good four to five years before it's ready and for this part, but we would have to, before they break ground, this would have to be resolved, so they would have a guaranteed funding source, but they would be able to pay it back within a short period of time, probably four to five years, is how long they would take to pay it back over time. And like I said, we do have precedence for doing it, and the Children's Advocacy Center, we did it once, we are doing it with animal services, we co-sign with DUCOM, and we did it for ROE for their conference rooms over in the Judicial Annex. So there is a precedence for doing this, but once again, we do not decide that now. There's a lot of, as Chris said, there's a lot more we have to do as far as flushing out sites A or B on the fairgrounds, or even, we might find out they might not work, it might be an off-site alternate one. So we have a lot more work we have to do, it's going to take us several months to get there, but at some point, this discussion for funding will come into play. We can actually take a pause here before we do the second part and answer questions with the initial part.
Members?
Thank you. While we're talking about funding, before we talk about loans or borrowing money, I'm wondering, there's been a lot of federal money associated with infrastructure. Have we looked into any DOT federal or even state grants to pick up some of this shortfall? Because I would rather see us get some federal funding or state funding for the grants rather than borrow money. Thank you.
We have not looked at any of those. I know under the previous ARPA and some of those things, transportation, if I recall, was specifically prohibited from those, so we haven't picked up after that to look at alternate fund sources for that.
I will say, as part of our due diligence, we're going to be performing over the next several months, our consultant can look at options for that to see if there is, if there are any funding sources, obviously, grant would be the number one thing if we could, but we will add that to the list and figure out. I would probably say that for a maintenance building, it's probably unlikely, but we will scour it and see what's available.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, I thought about that. For a building, it might not, you know, money might not be there, but even if it takes 100, you know, even if it takes a million dollars, $2 million off our...
Everything makes a difference.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I will add, I know our consultant team, as they've been flushing things out, they've talked about if you go solar, there are some grant opportunities out there for solar. Exactly. So again, it's not going to be the 60 million, but every...
Yeah, absolutely, or even if it pays for the HVAC system in the new building, you know.
Number?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Number one, are there any opportunities? The alternate one looks like a very large site. Is there any space for storage of like the sheriff's or the merit vehicles?
You're kind of taking our thunder away. That's part two.
Okay, never mind. Okay. Okay, sorry. Okay, so my other question is, for either of those alternative sites, are they in unincorporated DuPage County or Wheaton or Winfield?
So the fairgrounds are incorporated Wheaton, and we have met, Tim and Chris and I met with Wheaton last week to let them know, and they don't have any major concerns. Obviously, proof will be in as we move forward. The other site, it's my understanding is unincorporated, right? I think that the other side is unincorporated, so the jurisdiction would fall on DuPage County.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question real quickly in terms of, I mean, I'm glad that you met with Jim McGuire. I was happy to see that there is maybe a second option on the fairgrounds. My concern on that, though, and maybe I know you haven't vetted it out completely yet, is that if we take all that parking, where would people park for events when they are on the fairgrounds?
And that discussion was had when we met with Jim McGuire, and he said that the parking deck is more important to him than the field, because a field, as Chris said, is during times when it's raining or snowing, it's unusable. So there are a few events that does utilize it, but not something insurmountable. But as we move forward with both of those options, we will work closely with, you know, Jim McGuire to make sure as we're moving forward, it could be mutually beneficial.
I believe member Zay has a question.
Thank you, ma'am chair. You know, Chris, what happened? This has been on the books for years to rehab the old facility. What made the change of not going to where we were previously? And I know it says 100% DOT funded, but that's going to take away them from road projects. And my concern is, if we continue to build on the campus at the time when inflation's the highest and costs are up. So, I mean, are these numbers actually in two or three years going to be where they are? Are they going to be even higher or hopefully maybe lower?
So I'll start with the last one. I do believe we have factored into the cost, some inflationary, for 7% or so toward year of construction, so some inflation has been put into that. You are right, we did begin looking at this several years ago, when we were kind of looking at a west campus master plan and everything being done over there, and I think every time we kept coming back to our existing building and that footprint just being too small. You know, we're going to spend a lot of money, and the value added was nominal. In terms of funding, we have, in our five-year program currently, we have 45 million, which was the kind of the first concept we were looking at, 45 million in our five-year plan. So remember that every year, we do another five-year plan, and depending on when this gets moved forward, you know, if it's 5 million a year that we take from our highway program, which is a total of 70 million, you know, we may be able to fund it 100% DOT and still have an aggressive capital program.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Member Desartes?
Thank you. If, Chris, we go to the alternative off-site location, number one, or the off-site location at the fairgrounds, what happens to the footprint of the existing building?
Second part.
Second part of the presentation.
Thank you. Okay. Member LaPlante?
Thank you. So we have a feasibility study that everyone is aware of, obviously, that is out right now, where we are looking at, one of the things is to look and see what is the best and highest use of the fairgrounds in terms of the sports and cultural facilities. So I just want to make sure that that is still out there, because I don't, I am not a fan of using these, the fairgrounds for this. I don't believe that this is the highest and best use of that property until especially this feasibility study is conducted. I think that this open and contiguous land is so valuable, and I think to really, really make sure that we are doing something that can bring more to the community. All that, of course, I understand the need, the absolute necessity to have this functioning facility for, you know, this project. I understand that, of course. So, of course, I'm behind that of doing something there. I'm just concerned with putting it somewhere like the fairgrounds, where there could be other uses that we are investigating now.
I can, you know, in conversation with Greg Betaloff, our timing of when it will take us to vet these other options, and there's one you saw with option A or B that we need to vet, and there's another one you're going to hear about in part two. I think the timing coincides well with getting that vetting done and when the study will be done by choose DuPage. So I don't think the two of them are in conflict. I think that, you know, ultimately, it may be a decision for the board at that point, but timing-wise, we've got to do our due diligence to get to that point, and by that point, that report will be done.
Wonderful. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you so much. Okay. Member Galassi, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to echo what member LaPlante just said, and I'm glad that Nick just said that we're going to be able to get the feasibility study back before we make any decisions on the land over at the fairgrounds, because I do think that's prudent, and I'd like to make sure that that is the timeline, that we have all the information before we decide to do, before we decide what to do with that land, because I do think the feasibility study is very important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. I believe we'll move on to the second part of the presentation.
You have a lot of notes.
I kind of love...
You do have a lot of notes on there. So the second part of this, obviously, at some point, what we have decided through the first part was, the west campus doesn't work for the 140 Building. No matter how we squinted our eyes to figure out how to make it fit or move it around or shift it, we could not make it work over there. So what that means is, we have a 60,000-square-foot building that's 60-plus years old that, you know, and not now, but in, say, four to five years, because we would not do anything until, the beauty of going off-site somewhere is they can continue operations and build the other building, move their operations, and in four to five years, we will have a 60,000-square-foot building that is in very rough shape. And so, you know, Tim and his staff have done a great job in analyzing, because I know there's been a lot of conversations regarding both the election commission warehouse as well as the sheriff's storage, what are our options? And I will say that we've actually entered, there's, you will see, there's a kind of a curve ball that we thought of during, when we were meeting with some of the board members on this, that we will introduce as part of this as well. So I will turn it over to Tim to give a discussion on, okay, if we, when we do move this operation somewhere, what do we do with it? And that was Tim's part of it.
Next, two slides. Good afternoon, everybody. I want to start with the three primary storage needs that we're meeting on campus at the county board that you oversee, that they are. The first is the sheriff's equipment. Dan Builder, who talked to you about that probably about 60 days ago, you're going to have a lease forthcoming from you pretty quickly on that. That's about 12,000 square feet that they need. They're looking at a location in Burr Ridge. The second one is the elections warehouse, that has been under, at the same location since there was a DuPage Election Commission. That's about 28,000 square feet, that's located in Aurora. The third one is, there's an existing storage facility on site, that address is 170, it's right next to the 180 Building. That was also built in 1957, that was built at the same time as the 140 Building. So it is also older, but it's in a, it is in considerably better condition than the 140 Building is. So, next slide. What we looked at is pretty much four options. As Chris had mentioned, you, there's the original building, then there's the two additions. It sounds funny, it'd be very difficult to tear down the original building because all the infrastructure's in there. Gas goes in there, electric goes in there, the furnaces, the heat is in there, the boiler's in there, all those type of things. Gas goes in there, electric controls isn't, goes in there, the furnaces, the heat is in there, the boiler is in there, all those type of things. So we looked at whether we could refurbish the entire building, whether we could tear down a part of it, or whether we wanted to do a full demo and rebuild at that location. So the next time we're going to, got to go through each of those four options that we looked at and how it works. But if I may look ahead on you, if Chris can't make it work, it's really hard for us to make it work too. The complete demo is about, um, can you go to the next slide? There you go. Um, the complete demo is about one point eight million dollars. Um, that's actually incorporated in the numbers that Chris gave you. If they were to leave, that is included in sixty to sixty-five million. Um, if we wanted to rehabilitate the entire space, that would be about twenty millions, twenty million dollars. It's a little higher than Chris's number because there's some other things we would have to do in there beyond that because of some of the equipment that's in there and some other things we would need to take care of. If we wanted to a selective demo, which would mean if we wanted to tear down one of the, or two of the additions that were done and have a smaller footprint. We got that number down to about fifteen to seventeen million dollars. Um, and then if we wanted to tear it down and rebuild it, we've got eleven million dollars. So those are all numbers. The nice thing about what we're talking about now, Chris is going to be there four years from now. Well, DOT, sorry, Chris. You're with us in spirit. DOT will be there four years from now. So we, you have, we have a lot of time to further digest these and take them all in, see what really makes sense for us. Um, next slide. The curve ball that Nick had mentioned is that DOT is building a thirty-one million square feet. The facility offsite is immediately east of the DuPage Airport. It actually serves the fence property line with the airport. That will be done, uh, in November. There's an option that we've been discussing, and Nick's going to get into more details with you that that could actually be used for storage. Some of the storage facility needs that facilities has does not need to be on the campus. And DOT can replicate that space here on campus. There's some synergies that they would offer DOT. Uh, that's, that's an option that we can consider, whether it just makes sense to keep it with DOT. They built it to meet their needs. Or facilities could explore where that could be acquired, purchased, and then DOT could have all of their, all of their needs here on campus, which is more centrally located. There's some synergies to go with that. So from there, I'm going to have Nick come back and we'll just kind of wrap this up and, and answer any questions, everything we talked about here. But as a reminder, from our storage needs, we got a lot of time to keep dissecting these and crashing through these numbers.
So I just want to kind of go through the yellow freight. So actually, and we can't take credit for us when, for this one, Brian Kudjuski actually brought this idea up. And we actually, at first when we said it, we're like, no, there's no way. We just built a brand new building. DOT did. Why would we move that? But the more we started thinking about it, the thought process is this, they built a seven and a half million dollar building, thirty thousand square feet up in West Chicago. If, you know, and it's a brand new building. It's not like a rehab, so it's a brand new building. Now, what it doesn't have, it doesn't have air conditioning. It's, it's heat controlled, but no air conditioning. So if we were to do something, we might have to add air conditioning for the election commission. The thought process is, and what we want to explore in the next couple of months is, does it make sense to potentially enlarge what they're going to build, maybe on the fairgrounds or the offsite a little bit? To take these operations to make them more efficient in what they do day in and day out. So they, they don't have two, two areas that are different. And theoretically, the general fund then buys this property and this building from the, from DOT for seven and a half million. We'd probably put in another million for, uh, to make it. And, and move our operations for elections and potentially the, the sheriff up here. And as long as their, their enlargement of the building here on campus is less than seven and a half million to do that, there's a real benefit. Now, what we have to do and what Tim will do once the meeting is done, is we need to make sure and program, can we program those two operations in there? It's a little bit tight for both operations, but we need to figure out, you know, can we double stack things in the warehouse? Can we, can we, can we do it? But it's, it's really got, it's, it's already secured with, with fencing around there. You've got the sheriff's shoot house up there. So there's some real synergies that might make it. And I will tell you just, I mean, off the cuff of, of looking at it, even adding a million dollars, the payback, if we can get both those operations in, would be about thirteen to fourteen years, which is pretty good. And it's a new building, so we would definitely, it'd be beneficial long run. But both, these are the two items that we really need to check over the next couple of months is what can be done with the yellow freight? Can we make it work some, some form or fashion? And which site on the fairgrounds makes more sense if either one of them or the offsite one? And so we need to figure out those and we need to come back to you and, and report that. So, so like I said, there's a lot of things that we, we have uncovered the last couple of weeks that we need more time, but we're very hopeful that we're on the right track and we can give a, a final, final option. And the nice thing is that timeline coincides very nicely with the, the lease that the, the board approved for the sheriff vehicles, which was about four or five years. So the, the, it coincides very well with that. And so I think everything, now we have had no discussions with the elections on this. We have prior on other areas, so we need to have those discussions and we will have those over the next couple of months. And I think that's the last slide, isn't it? Tomorrow. So, so that is, I, I pretty much covered where we're going to be moving forward. I mean, next step for us is a lot more analysis. We need to conceptually lay out everything. We need to program everything out. We need to run the benefit cost of all the options to, to come back to you. And ultimately, this board needs to figure out the location, the final location, where we want to do it. And like Tim said, we don't have to decide necessarily the, the reuse of those other functions, because we've got four years to figure that out. I mean, it'd be nice to have a plan where we're going, but that's step one. It, you know, we need to, obviously at that point, probably memorialize how we think we might do financing so that, so that DOT can have a, a solid plan. So because if they're going to move forward, once they, they pull the trigger on final design, they're going to be spending a lot of money. And so they need to know that they can, that they, it will be funded some way or another. That being said, I mean, they won't need the general fund money from the reserves for a good three, four, or five years theoretically. And if something changes dramatically in that time, we might have to switch to a bank loan if that's the case. If the economy, you know, struggles and, and it's, we can always switch the direction, but they need to know kind of a, a direction where they want to go. And so, once we get that, that'll be memorialized in some kind of a resolution. Then they're going to be doing design and architectural for, for moving forward one forty building. And we think, Chris, how long do we think design is probably, once you, once you enter the contract for final design? Twelve to eighteen months. So we've got some time here and the building is getting no younger every year. So that the one, the biggest takeaway from this is there is not a do nothing option. We, we don't have that option. There must be something done and that is the one given. Final slide. So that's, we pretty much, I, I mean, we're going to have a lot of meetings, a lot of conceptual. Everybody who we've talked to will probably talk to a dozen more times before we come back. But my guess is at some time in the first quarter of twenty-four, you'll be hearing from us again. But we just wanted to update everybody. So it's, it's at least on your radar about where we're heading.
Member Chaplin.
Any, we'll now open things up for a few more questions.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the great presentation and the, uh, phone, our little phone call last week. It's very helpful. Just in talking with the clerk. I know that during elections, the auditorium is used a lot. And I know sometimes that causes frustration with other departments that that auditorium is being used. So I don't know if any thought has been, um, you know, put into that part when you're talking about expanding for that voting. Would we have room for anything like that when we're doing this?
I mean, the, it all depends on how much money that, that we want to spend. I mean, the benefit cost comes into play because I, the, I can make it as big as this board wants it. If we demolish what we have over there and build something new, I can easily fit the, the warehouse, fit the early voting and fit anything. It's all a benefit cost. That's what, that's what the options. And, and the nice thing is that is not something we necessarily have to decide when we come back here. But we can definitely figure out what makes sense. I will tell you that the yellow freight with both operations and, and the, I mean, it's good. It's a really good thing, problem to have, but obviously you saw the prices that we're paying. The lease, the lease terms for the, the sheriff vehicle is, is much higher because it's twenty-four, seven man security. So that's a better, easier payback. The rate that, that Tim and with the help of Greg Battleoff and choose DuPage negotiated for the election warehouse is a really, really good deal. And, you know, I, I mean, I might come back and be like, I, I can't make it work. I mean, and it is what it is. I mean, it's a really good rate. You saw, we've got almost twice or more square footage for the election warehouse and we do the vehicle storage. And it's less expensive because it's a really good rate that we were able to negotiate.
Yeah. And, um, I do think it's a good idea, you know, to try to get our vehicle, our sheriff's vehicles closer to, um, you know, our county campus. And on our campus, I feel much better, you know, good about that.
And I really like the fact, the yellow freight, you already have a police presence up there with the sheriffies. They have their shoot house up there.
Right.
And so there, you have a, a very large, and, and we'll look at different options. Maybe it's just the sheriff. Maybe it's, I, who knows? We'll look at different options, but we have time for that second part. We don't need to make a decision on that now.
And we have some really great financing options as well, some that, you know, really make a lot of sense, um, that can, you know, we can take more reserve or general fund without impacting our bond rating or, you know, things of that nature. That might be a way to go, but we have a lot of time to discuss it. But thank, thank you for bringing it forward. And I'm glad we're talking and talking about this out loud in, in meetings. So it's great. Thank you.
Member LaPlante?
Thank you. Um, Nick, can you please go back to the Member Kudjuski's idea? And can you please explain that? I don't feel like I have clarity on that.
So, so when Member Kudjuski mentioned, because we just, DOT is like eminently within like the next month, yellow freight, they rebuilt it over the last year or two. And it, it's a brand new seven and a half million dollar building that basically because they're out of room and the one forty building, they put during summer, they put some of their winter operation items up there. During winter, they put some of their summer operations up there. So it just helps them gain more room. So we have a brand new seven and a half million dollar building. And at that point, Member Kudjuski mentioned, well, why don't you put those operations in this new building? And at first we thought, well, no, because we just built a new building. Why would we do that? But as we started thinking, the thing that makes it possible is possibly supplanting the operations that are in there right now with either the election warehouse or the, the sheriff. And we would basically, general fund would buy that building if it makes sense financially. And then they could use that money to theoretically enlarge slightly the one forty building they're building and to include those operations that are now split. And as long as it's a, it's a, it's a wash economically at least, it would make it far more, they would be much more efficient operationally by having all their operations in one building. And that's where the benefit comes out.
Okay.
But we have to, what we have to do is we've worked with our engineers to figure out, can we add that function? And what is the cost of adding that function? If the cost of adding that function in the building is twelve million dollars, well, then it doesn't make sense. If the cost of adding that function is five million dollars, well, then DOT just made two and a half million dollars.
Right.
And so toward their project. So, so it's, we, those are all the things that we have to kind of gel up in the next couple of months.
Okay. So my question then is, can you please explain if, um, that option, the offsite, the, the doodot, right, the nineteen hundred building in West Chicago? So then what would that supplant for everything that you presented in, in, um, the first part of your presentation?
What, the, nothing, because that.
Nothing at all.
Right now, that building, as you see it, assumes yellow freight stays in, in the, uh, DOT that, that they keep operating that. We would have to make the building theoretically bigger to bring the yellow freight functions down here.
Right. So would you still need to find a separate location like then?
No, make the one forty building bigger. That's the only way.
Right. So we would have the one forty building bigger. We'd have the facility in West Chicago. What I'm asking is then does that negate or not?
Yeah, you do not, if, if you make one forty building, building bigger, they no longer need to use yellow freight. Now we have an empty building.
And are we still looking then, you have to still look for, for example, to build on the fairgrounds to do all of that? Is that still in play?
That's still in play.
This is not a, another alternative.
No, it's not another, it's just, it's an and.
So the West Chicago idea does not supplant what just.
Not. The, the, all of our options are still absolutely viable with or without yellow freight. Yellow freight would just kind of be like the bonus of the, the thing to make it even more efficient and more cost effective.
Okay, thank you. Um, Member Evans. Thank you. Sorry. Nick, can you explain what yellow freight is?
Uh, so yellow freight, um, long time ago, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong here. Yellow freight was who, who DOT bought that building from? It's referred to by all of us as yellow freight. It's probably, it's not, it's not an accurate, um, name because obviously we own it now, but it, I mean, that's correct. We bought it from yellow freight, how many years ago? Twenty, twenty, thirty years ago. And so we bought it and that's just what it's referred to as yellow freight.
Okay.
And it's right, like the fence of the airport is right there. So that's, that's the location of, of, of this building.
Okay. And then, um, yeah, I think Member LaPlante asked, I was a little confused about if alternatives went through whatever.
So all we need to do is we need to think about it, I mean, our operations were this footprint. And what is a hundred and twenty? How, what was your hundred, what was? One forty, I mean, one forty, do you need? Hundred and fifty thousand, maybe we need a hundred and seventy thousand now if we add in the yellow freight. And so we just got to figure out financially, can we add that for less than seven and a half million, which is what they paid for the building? And if we can do it, then, then it's a, it's a win-win.
Interesting. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Mem. Thank you, Chair Ozag. Um, just one quick question. How long is that lease on the election? I can't remember on the election warehouse. How much, how long is?
July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And you always do it in even years because, um, it's better for them.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So the, I mean, that's, like I said before, the election lease, we're, we're a victim of our own success on that one. We really are. And it's, they, they get along, they, they work well. I mean, we did a market analysis and, and we have a good rate.
Member Desart?
Um, thank you. I know you guys are thinking about every detail, but I just wanted to point out that on the fairground site B, um, that main entrance off of Manchester to the east is, has always traditionally been, I know you guys were talking about to the west of that main entrance, um, is the grassy parking. But to the east of that main entrance road has traditionally been handicap parking. So you're going to lose all that handicap parking.
I will tell you, any, any of the options over at fairgrounds, we have, there's a lot of due diligence we have to do and we will work very closely with Jim McGuire. And I, I mean, it, wherever we go, if, if it is indeed the fairgrounds, we hope to have it mutually beneficial for both parties so that, so that we're not, we're not necessarily erasing functions, but maybe adding, adding functionality and maybe tearing down some old buildings that, that are, you know, we can demolish as part of it. So we will work closely with Jim as part of it. So absolutely all of that. The, I mean, all of it, some, you know, access, we've got parking for the courts down there. We have, like you said, the, the, the parking for the handicap parking there, we've got to deal with. There, we've got the, how much noise will be on Manchester? Well, how will the snow operations work with salt? All of those are questions that we have to flesh out in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. And the main reason why I raise my hand is for this, um, slide that says one forty garage future options. Could you help me understand this? I'm looking at the numbers. So like, for example, option four is, um, full demolition and build new on site is eleven point four million. But if you only demolish some of the newer, um, additions, it's more expensive than just the whole, is that true?
Wendy, can you?
It says one forty garage future options.
I know exactly which one.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to understand those prices because, I mean, it seems.
That one right there, right? Go ahead.
The best option would be just to demolish.
Do the math, the, the cost to rebuild.
Right.
And, and I don't want, it's slightly, so it's a very slight savings if you were to rebuild one forty. Sometimes it's cheaper to rebuild, I'm sorry, sometimes it's cheaper to build new than to refurbish it. And that's what those numbers are showing here.
And if you, if you look at the one forty building, I, I mean, I, I was, you know, it was unfortunate when we got the analysis. And we actually, because there's so much money at stake here. Chris, DOT did an analysis and facilities did an analysis, separate entities to make sure, because we're talking sixty million dollars. We want to be right in what we're recommending to you guys. separate entities to make sure, because we're talking sixty million dollars. We want to be right in what we're recommending to you guys. And so unfortunately, that building, I mean, a complete, I mean, just the floor alone to do anything but park vehicles is over a million dollars, just to, just to redo the floor. The HVAC, we're barely keeping the thing running now. Uh, the windows, complete, complete replacement, the roof, complete replacement. I mean, basically, you have nothing left of the building. It's almost easier to rip it down and build something new. And that's where we're at. I mean, I give credit to
The cheaper option as well.
Credit to DOT and facilities for keeping that building going. I'm just, my only concern in this whole thing is four years is a long time. Can we keep it going without sinking a lot of money into it? That's my biggest concern.
Any other questions?
How about online? Is there anything?
Any, anybody online? Any questions? Okay, not hearing any. Um, I want to thank all of you today for coming. And I especially want to thank Nick, Tim, Chris, and your staff uh for all the work you've done on this. Um, I especially want to thank you for the collaboration that you've done with meeting with all of the stakeholders in the past few weeks. The brainstorming has been really important and I think a lot of great ideas have come out of it. And um especially, I want to thank you for thoughtful planning for the future. By the time we actually do something about this building, it's going to be close to seventy years old. And that's really our experience in the public sector. We need to build for a very long term. And you guys have kept this going as long as you possibly could. So um, going forward, we're going to keep um all options on the table. Everybody will be invited to share ideas. And um, we're gonna get this done somehow, some way. Um, Chairman Garcia.
Thank you. I I just wanted to also thank you all for all the hard work you're putting into us. I know there's a lot more details that need to be put together to make this uh uh, a project that I know is going to, as um Chair Ozak said, is going to last for years and years and years. Um, but I am worried about the condition that the building is in now uh for the staff that's working there. So I hope that this thing comes together sooner than later. Uh, the other thing I did say, if you are going to be looking at the election commission coming, uh, they do need air conditioning. So I'm just gonna like push for that. So, so other Okay, perfect. Okay, so um, other than that, thank you so much. And thank you all for did taking some time off on your fifth week here and coming in on a Monday. I really appreciate all the board members that are here. So thank you.
Do we have any old business? Okay, any new business? All right, uh, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all so much for coming.